Board and trustee's meeting for the town of Fremont Falls will come at this time. The date is October 7th and the time is 7:05. Please note that all board members are present this evening. At this time, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you guys for coming tonight to Fremont Falls and welcome back.
Thank you. My great town hall is just gorgeous.
I know.
It's out there and it's very nice and we're about to open up there, so it's exciting.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda?
I would request that we please on new business, 7B, that be reviewed with special.
7B?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any others?
In the minutes from our previous meeting, you mentioned the resolution adopted the revised 2014 budget. I don't see that on the, I don't know, prepared or such, but we might want to put that in this whole business perhaps in our next meetings.
Okay.
And Board, I have one agenda item that should be discussed at the request of the judge and prosecuting attorney stemming from a municipal court case in the district of. I don't see that person here, but I would ask that we leave that toward the end, so that if he does arrive.
Okay, and so then that would be just, you would take that lead, Mr. Pratt?
Sure.
Perfect. And I'll entertain a motion at this time with those revisions.
Move so.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, both by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay, item number three, consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed for further review?
I have a question on the bills run. If you want to just hold that out?
Okay, well, hold out for bills run. Mary, did we have acceptance of the September 2014 financials? No, so those need to be taken out as well, guys. So we will approve the consent agenda, the minutes for September 2nd, 2014, September 16th, 2014, at this time? No to approve?
So is it?
Okay.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then bills run, September 17th through October 7th, for $98,585.93. Mr. Patrone?
I have a question about the, there are two purchases at Walmart that are identical on the same day. Is that just redundant, or was that a mistake, or?
Thank you.
The eighth of the, the third and, the third and final in the line items.
For 88, 88?
They're, they're 9/17/2014, same date, same, same amount.
Okay. Mary? I don't, I don't have information on that.
It's out of order, too. It should have been at the top, the date probably, all the way down. It looks like a check number. Well, it looks like it's all dated.
Okay. Do we have those checks designed this evening? Okay. The date of the problem is one was in September, one was in October. Okay, so that answers your question. What was the answer? One was in September, one was in October. These are.
They're on the same date.
They're on the same date.
They're on the same date. Okay, I haven't. Okay, we will get that information.
Tonight, or?
Thank you.
Tonight, or?
Okay, we are moving on. Can you answer your question? Okay, guys, are we going to approve these bills?
I have one more question, please, on the bills run. And that is that on the agenda, insurance bills run for a total of $98,585.93. And on the, and on the, on the list of accounts payable, the outstanding is about $685.93, which is correct.
The actual total for the bills run is $99,144.65. There were some extra checks.
I'm just, I'm just, all I'm interested in is the ones that are posted here, the one on the agenda and the one on the, on the bills run.
You don't have the proper agenda.
We have approval of the bills run.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I didn't hear the answer.
October 7th, and I, about $99,144.
Excuse me, I didn't get an answer.
Okay. I second that.
On what?
On the, the amount that our town clerk has said, it's $99,144.
There's a hundred thou, there's a hundred dollar discrepancy. I know a hundred dollars is not a lot, but if you make that, if you make that mistake every week, you're talking about $2,400.
Sir, do you have a?
I don't know. We don't get it, agenda.
Well, and I printed it off the website, just to clarify. And on the, on the Facebook, it's listed at 98,585.93, and the clerk just said 99,144.65, and I think that's what's being questioned. That's the one. The 99? So the one that this is the. Perhaps your Facebook is incorrect. But no, this one says 98,585.93.
This is exactly the same.
And the clerk says 199.65. Yeah. Okay, so we're, we're moving to approve the 99,0144.65.
Where do you approve the number that's different than what's on the agenda?
Because this is the agenda.
It is the same.
We're just, we're handed another agenda that's exactly the same.
Right. Listen, what was given to us, and it's a different process. I did not even print out the agenda for tonight because I left, right, and came back and I'm sitting here, so I didn't print the agenda.
Mayor, it really seems like if your, the board has the most updated info. Sorry, that's how it works. They give the most updated info. So I, I have one that says 98,585, too, okay? So I'm in the same vote as all of you. If the board's saying, based on the info we have, based on the info that we have, we have the most updated info. It's kind of like the, anything that I change, like resolutions that, that haven't been approved, they get it, they get a look at it first. If you guys want to look at it, that's fine, but a clerical difference between an agenda that was printed, frankly, with this one once, probably on Friday, and the agenda that's sitting in the board's table with the most updated information, really shouldn't be this big of a deal.
In other words, the public doesn't get the opportunity to get the accurate information from the board.
It's not what I said, what I said.
Well, yes, you did. You just said, they can have different information.
Actually, what I said was the board has the most up-to-date information. They're charged with voting, they're charged with making decisions. So what I said, verbatim, was the board has the most up-to-date information. So if there's a discrepancy between something that the board is seeing and something that we have out here, and frankly, what's on my screen matches out here, that's just new information that the clerk has given them to provide them prior to making their decision. That doesn't mean that they need to go update the Facebook account, they don't. I haven't even asked, they update their town attorney with the numbers. So again, it shouldn't be. It's, they've got the supporting documents, they've got the numbers, and they're charged with the decision.
Excuse me. And what I'm saying is why can't we get that information at the same time?
Can't. It's a matter of whether before they make their decision or after they make their decision.
Mr. Pratt, this is actually my fault. We can now open this again, because you actually brought me a form and asked me to make copies of it.
That's because we had no agenda.
So you brought it in from Facebook or wherever you got it from, thinking it was most accurate. Our, our town clerk didn't provide, which is the reason why I, I won't make that mistake again of providing stuff that comes in from the outside.
Well, maybe we can get it from Mr. Pratt.
Next time, I'll do that.
Guys, we are going to move on. We are moving on. It can happen after the meeting, we are moving on this order of business. Okay, at this time, we'll move into item number four, update votes. Okay, all those in favor? Both by saying aye? Aye. Opposed?
Oh my goodness.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into item number four, which is a public input. So I'm not listed on the agenda. If you have something to address with the board, please stand, state your name. Mike, can we move that over to the podium, please? The podium. State your name and address, please. About three minutes. If something comes up that we need to put in a future agenda, we certainly can do that at the next meeting. Okay. Is there any public comment?
My name is Matt Patrone, I live at 10840 Nurdles Street. I'm a little disappointed that the trails committee has not, has not appeared to discuss their agenda or their minutes in their meeting. It's in the town code that they, that they report to the, to the board at the, at the next meeting after their meeting. That's not been, that's not been done. I appreciate the fact that the, that the trails committee has found a way to patch the, the damage memorial sign for the Thomas Trail. Although I must say that, although I commend them for doing that, I think the, I think the fact that it took seven years to get it done, probably take a shine off of that. I speak with the Thomases on a regular basis, I, I take care of the property for them. And they're, they were saddened that the photograph was stolen. After, after offering to pay numerous times to have the memorial replaced, they were promised the gene that the, that the, they were told that the memorial was in Fremont Falls and that all they needed to do was set it through up to install it. Apparently, that was. The, and, and what they ended up with was a, a road that was attached on what was a, a nice memorial. They're, they're a little disappointed about that. The other, the other issue I had was, I talked at several meetings about the engaged four-by-four sign on Canamont Trail, Canamont Road, Canamont Street, that was, that was taped over, that was, that was taped over again, that was damaged, now it's been removed. And I'd like to see that, that sign go back up. It's getting on to winter time, and it's time that, that the sign go back up. It's, it endangers people if it's not there. I think it was determined several years ago that the, the signs were helpful. There are several around town, there's no reason for that sign not to be there. I'd like to have it replaced as quickly as possible. And if anybody knows a reason why the sign is not there, I'd like to hear that. Does anybody know?
Mr. Patrone, this is not a time for us to comment. This is a time for you to express your thoughts.
Well, it's time, interesting to see, is there someone here who knows why the sign was removed?
Sir.
If so, I'd like, I'd like to answer my questions sometime in the near future.
Thank you very much, you may have a seat, sir.
My time is not up?
Time is up.
I'm sorry, because you're missing the.
Mr. Patrone, you may have a seat, and we will continue on with our meeting. Thank you.
I'm sorry that nobody was timing this because we have less than.
Next, please. Next, thank you. Yes, please come up and state your name.
Janie Patrone, my way Carl Nurdles Street. And I'm talking about the sign, engaged four-wheel drives. I think it should be put back up, especially in the winter. We have two homes there that are vacation homes. It's approved, and I thought it was a good idea, too, but they need to know that. The sign, especially in the winter, to get up. Now, I was told that the realtor, Ms. Snow, she taped it, and then we took the tape off. That's not right. And then I came in and talked to the marshal, and he thought that maybe Mike took it off. So I talked to Mike this evening, he said, you took it off because you want the people to sell their house on Florence Street. And this sign is why she taped it, so that she could sell her home because she lost a sale. Somebody was going to buy her house, and they saw the four, I get nerves, saw the four engaged four-wheel drive, and she lost a sale. Now, you want her to sell that home and be nice to her and sell, but what about the rest of the community, Lori? This is a safety thing for us. Please put it back on. If you need money to get a sign, I'll donate the money to get a sign. Please put it on soon. Thank you.
And how long have you lived in Fremont Falls?
Thirty-eight years.
And you need a sign, really?
A sign, of course. By all try.
That's good, thank you very much for your comments.
To get on the street. I've been there for thirty-eight years. Why didn't you take a test, sell a house?
By the way, this is time for public comments.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayor's going.
Thank you. Okay, next. Any more public comments?
Hi.
Hi. Come on in.
I think we're waiting for Ann Pennell. She hopefully is okay right now, but there's so much controversy surrounding her feeding the.
Hang on, you're on, I, I, you weren't here, but I actually had the agenda item you put on. So this is the time for non-agenda items.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're already on, you don't, you don't get it.
So he added it to the agenda.
Okay, yes.
So that it will be, it will be added to when Ms. Pennell gets here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, then you can call her. Okay, so she.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Thank you, okay. Thank you all for that. And can we get this moved? When we get our new town hall, this could be secret. We have to do the little. This is a continuation until March 15th. I've requested it for Patrick Foundation, but because it was already listed on the agenda. And notice, we will move into a public comment time in case there are people here that want to speak about this. So at this time, we are moved into a public comment, it is 7:25. Are there any citizens here, any people that want to speak on the not-doing trailer? Nope? Okay. So then at 7:25 and a half, the public hearing is closed. And we do have to do that, we noticed that like that, because it had been in previous minutes that we were going to have a public hearing.
I think you want to continue.
Oh, okay, so we're going to continue it. Continue it to, until, yeah.
Excuse me.
So trustee Stevens, is that going to be on every agenda until March 20? No? Okay. Okay.
That was my question, too. I didn't hear this answer, that was my question.
Right, so it will be continued on March, in March.
But I mean, like, he denied everyone?
No.
He said, no, this is the last time.
Right. Yes. Okay. Awesome, so I've kind of understood people business, search that insurance for the hall. Receive that information, and this is just needing to sign that for the insurance resource app. This just needs to go to them. Are there any questions about this at all? So we the same?
None.
The same number as this last year. Okay. Do we have any questions? Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve this. Okay.
So move on.
So get your rate score. All those in favor? We have further discussions. Okay, you have, you have second? Second, okay. Any discussion, Board? Okay, all those in favor, both by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. So then just give that signed, Mary. Give that to them. The insurance? Yeah. I get your rate score. We're going to move on. Okay. Okay. Revised special event permit, item number B. So we've had some examples from other communities on the, you have special events that Mr. Pratt has given us to look at. Okay, can you promise Mr. Pratt anything?
No, we've, we've had success using each of those. There's some that are outstanding, or have had some successful.
Right.
So they get a point, quite widely. Cover pretty wide array of activities. Grand Lake Fireworks. Grand Lake also has similar projects, it's called, a lot of last year. So I'm confident that we can imagine these to work, to what you guys would hear more of it. How much time does the board have, what they, they want, and what, what they like. Wanted to see.
Okay, Board, do you have any comments about these two, any ideas on what we can do? How would you like to handle this in coming forward?
I like the, the examples from the Grand Lakes. It does seem to be all encompassing. I have trouble envisioning something that within Fremont Falls, this would not cover. And I think the trustee Stevens on the spot, I think his committee would be a good one to adopt or adapt this, actually, like Fremont Falls more specifically.
Trustee Stevens?
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I think since, do we have a timeframe that's reasonable to get this issued? That's, we have events coming up in the new year.
Yeah, I, I, one of the things we need to work, to tell the clerk on is actually posting or publishing the notice of public hearing for the ordinances. That's probably the reason why we don't do it. So I can certainly work with that ink and gel. Like to see it right for the 15th of. Let's see, the 22nd?
The 23rd.
24th. Can you send this in soft copy? So it's, it's going to be edited.
So we'll put this on the agenda then for the next meeting?
I.
You have, that's not enough time.
We'll be in a comment.
Yeah. So when is your coming meeting?
No, it's good.
John, yeah?
Fine.
So let's just, let's just put this for like November, the beginning of November, by the middle of November?
November 4th and 8th.
What do you guys think?
If you can, if you can send that out in soft, I'll, I'll take that stuff out after I put it on the 18th.
Okay, November 18th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and this one sent in the board package, Doc?
It's hard copy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, it's in PDF, yeah. I don't, I don't play. I made it, I can get Grand Lakes in the, in Word.
Okay, perfect. So it'll be on November 18th?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, Matt, for doing this.
Thank you for the work.
Yes. Hey, I received fireworks laser show insurance liability, trustee Gardner and Mayor, and town clerk Mary. Trustee Gardner?
Yes, I have contacted several laser companies, and they're getting me information, programs, everything, how it works, what we need to know. And as soon as I get that information, I will notify the board on it. And I'm still working with the department to find out about a live one compared to a laser one, see which one's more feasible, financial.
I, I did get a call, put a call in yesterday, and I have not heard back from them. My understanding is that it is covered under our insurance already. If we have somebody from the outside do it, they need to get their own liability insurance. Insurance companies do it. But I did call them yesterday, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. So I did it all right.
So let's go ahead and put this on the next board meeting as well. Good, thank you, thank you for your work on this. Thank you, trustee Gardner. Okay, under new visit, business, item number seven. We have a special guest today, Mr. Dunn, right, Dunn? Yes, and he's with Colorado Springs Convention Visitor Bureau Tourism Project.
Thanks.
Yes. I think we got a presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, we sent it, but I don't know if it's printed out.
I didn't ask for it because I wasn't understanding the presentation.
Yeah, I've got, I've got this for. Again, my name is Doug Price, and I'm the president of Colorado Springs Convention and Visitor Bureau. And the reason I'm here tonight is to ask for endorsement, not financial support, but endorsement of the town of Fremont Falls to a study that we're going to be doing on tourism. And the short version of this, because I don't want to hold up a lot of people's time tonight, but in Colorado Springs, there is a lodging and auto rental tax that is collected when people check out of their hotel. And that tax is used to help promote tourism marketing for the Pike's Peak region. The lion's share of that tax comes to the Convention Visitor Bureau, and we use that to promote all the great things that we have, not only in Colorado Springs, but also in Etowah County and in Fremont County. That particular tax has been flat since about 1979. It's 2% on the hotel room, and it's 1% if you rent a car. As you all can imagine, something that hasn't increased since 1979 tends to fall behind in, in terms of what people, people collect. And I can just tell you that for about the last 10 years, that whole pot, if you will, has been about $4 million. And it's been plus or minus $4 million for about the last 10 years. Well, there's a lot of activity going on from a tourism standpoint that we need to be promoting going forward. And we're not suggesting that the only way to do that, to raise the promotion funds, is through raising the tax. What we're doing is we're going to commission a company called Tourism Economics, and you folks have a copy of their proposal. And what they're going to do is they're going to come in and, and compare us, benchmark us against other cities along the front range, as well as some of the mountain communities, you know, Vale and Steamboat Springs and others, and even some communities outside the state of Colorado that we compete with, to see what are their budgets for tourism promotion? And is Colorado Springs competitive? What could you do if you had additional funds? And some of you may have, have been reading or heard about just one project, for instance, is the City for Champions project, which would have a new Olympic museum in downtown Colorado Springs, a new sports and events center, a new visitor center up at the Air Force Academy, and a new sports and wellness center up at UCCS. That's one example, but, but there are other projects that are happening, the, the new Royal Sports Bridge, where it is rebuilt, and Seven Falls. So a lot of the things that we do need to promote, if rain visitors. promote if we're bringing visitors to this region. And so what we're asking, uh, communities and organizations to do is to simply let us use your town name on this report as being someone that endorses, that this study be done. We're not asking you to endorse the study because none of us know what the results are going to be, but they're going to do a fact based study on how competitive we are as a, as a community and the way we go out and promote tours. That's the short version of what that 20-some-figure report is talking about. And I'm certainly open to, to answering questions. So what do you need from us? I would just, I, when I talked to the mayor about this on the phone, she asked me if I would come up and ask you all to vote to support and let us use your name as, as one of the communities that supports us to go out and do this study. There are, uh, 19 others that have signed on and said that they can do this and, uh, tonight is the first night we could, uh, I could get on the agenda and talk to them.
Are there any other questions?
What will my demand support you for moving this study?
You know what, it's, it's, uh, I think it's, it's just going to show unity from, from Monument, uh, to Purple Creek and, and Canadian City and, and others in the whole Pike's Peak region to say, this is something that we're behind because tourism is afforded to us. We don't want this to just look like it's a, a self-serving thing that the Convention Visitors Bureau is going to do. So that's why we're reaching out to the communities.
Trustee?
What, uh, when is the length of time this study is proposed to take?
Uh, three months, uh, through the end of December and we're expecting to get a full report sometime in the first quarter.
Any questions?
Here's, here's a question. The, um, the tax that you're referring to, is this comparable to the lodging tax that is on the ballot for the Ziggah Fountain? We're going to raise from 2% to 3%?
That would be, yeah, it would be.
It's a comparable tax.
It's exactly right. Yep, it's exactly right.
Right. And then part, part two is, does this study include feasibility of increasing that tax?
It does. That would be one of the things that would happen.
Trustee Quinn, I thought you were about to say something.
I was just, I think I have the answer though. So they're going to be evaluating not only the impact cost, but the entire, like, the entire place is not going to be looked at account.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
You said 490, do you mean according to Anne Lee?
Yes, ma'am. The total budget is, the, the total collected by the City Colorado spend is about $4 million.
Or I think this is an opportunity to once again show that we are working with other people, that we are wanting relationships, tourism and the whole Pike's Peak area is important and get that. People visiting Colorado Springs, they can rent Green Mountain Falls, and I think this would help, um, our town as well. So, um, I would like to move to, um, say that they could keep their name on that, on the study. Endorse.
Endorse.
That's the word. Endorse.
I'll send that. I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
The Commission for the Bureau of the Mountain Falls.
You do? Yep, Your Honor, what's that?
Sure.
We don't have any chamber people here. My, Mr. Loman is one of our chamber people and Vicki, right? So I think this, this would be good. So, um, okay, so any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Very nice.
Thank you very, very much.
So, do you need anything more? Do you need, or you have, do you need anything more? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for making the trip up here.
Well, my pleasure and I also want to acknowledge that, uh, it was great that Tyler joined us last week in Washington DC on our, on our trips. And when you talk about regional collaboration, uh, Tyler and, and a number of us got a chance to really meet and spend some time, didn't know each other last week and, and, uh, we only had four days, so we couldn't fix Washington in four days. But it was, it was good to, good to be there and see the kind of issues that, uh, we're, we're talking to our local delegation. So thank you for being there. Thanks for putting the agenda.
Okay, bye.
Yep.
Thank you, safe travels. Okay, I don't see, uh, resolutions to adopt identification cards for all town employees, board members, and planning commission members. Nick, Matt, do you have that?
Yeah.
Please, it's, it's making its way down. Oh, making its way down.
It's mentioned there.
Okay. So.
So board, this is a resolution that I was asked to draft, adopting a policy in the case of the use of official town in Fremont Falls. Sounds like there have been certain disasters that require between a social person and, uh, working on town business rather than just a citizen who's trying to give back to a quarantine area. But it actually extends a little bit further than that, that there, actually moving into this building, they have the people that come on, who even know who you are, um, as an employee of the town or as sort of the trustees of the board. So I have drafted this pretty broadly, um, to include, um, town employees, trustees, the planning commission members, and really any town official. And, uh, I, I've made it as simple as I could, but if there are questions to redraft, I'll have that.
One little question, although applied, um, I'm presuming the identification is the property of the town, should that relationship change that would need to be turned in by whoever owns it?
Yeah, and it's my understanding that the actual ID badges currently that we had to say something to that, if I'm back from, from this stuff.
Is the property of town Fremont Falls. And it's D.
Because I'd suggest that part of personnel policy is adding in, you know, check out procedures as far as wrapping up, uh, while you, if player related, sure, that does the relationship, the collection of ID badges.
So that could be, should, so we should put that in?
Part of our separation policy.
Okay. Do we need to mention added this?
No.
No.
We can amend the personnel policy. For those who get.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions about this at all or comments about this board?
What is the cause?
What is the positiveness? It's like 250? Uh, for each of these, identification.
About $5.
$5. You didn't think there were that much? I think there were 250, at least 250 of these. Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Cobb, do we need to put this on the agenda? Can we take a look at it or can we adopt this this evening?
No, it's a resolution. You're, uh, certainly welcome to act on it tonight. If you'd like.
Okay. Yes, trustee Stephen?
Numbering of resolutions.
So the numbering of resolutions, I, I addressed with the last resolution I drafted, um, in conjunction with talking with the newly appointed town clerk. This makes it really easy for a town clerk to look at just the resolution number and see which date it was adopted. So this would be adopted 2014, October 7th, and then A would be first of that meeting, B would be the second, C would be the third. So that, rather than flipping through sometimes these voluminous resolutions to the back to try to find out what day was drafted, you can actually see it from the title. And I did clear that with your clerk.
And so 7A would be for the first resolution that, of that meeting, and then if we were to have others, it would be B, C. Very nice.
I don't.
Yes.
Is it necessary to have a resolution or can it just be a policy?
Hey, I will say by and large, most of the actions that you do by resolution could be done by vote. And that's really hard for your clerk to remember. This is really easy for your clerk to pull out and say, oh, this is where we are. So that's why I think that they're on doing resolutions. But no, you, you could just, uh, vote, you pass a resolution.
Fair enough. Your third guest? Nice, what ties mixed up? You good?
I'm going to refer. Second.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay. Item number D, GMN used tax collections by PPR BD update. Trustee Quinn?
Yes. We are pretty much set to go. The outstanding item would be basically the, uh, government agreement. Do have drafts, um, that I have kind of worked over, uh, inserted in Fremont Falls where it was necessary. And this is the standard regionability language. I believe I sent that copy while back. We have a chance to do that.
I don't know if I see it, so I might, might need.
The only thing, uh, really that's, that's needing any attention is the effective date of termination. I'm assuming that it's one year, uh, which basically is renewed each year by written agreement. And I don't know if that's something that we could discuss with each other, especially if it's longer than one year instead of having to revisit it every year, but it may just, that might be something to look at, but I don't think it's really an issue that you're at a year, I just think back to the, the, uh, permits for the facilities. Making that, got the fact, but it's up to the body of the board on that. But basically, it's fairly ready to go. I have the latest copy here of that if you want.
I, I did want to email it. I do have it, I will review it.
You know, with, withstanding anything large jumping out about this, you know, we go ahead and have this initiated, we can start the process.
Trustee Quinn, how long after we get this initiated, does it take to start the process and when would this starting happen?
I would speak the original, but I believe that this has basically turned on. Everything is ready. I, I, what is the percentage? They, we, well, their fee, yes, uh, 2%, I'm sorry, I shared a percentage. Their fee percentage. 2%. 2% of what they collect, yes.
2% of the gross, not, we, if we collect 3%, they're not taking 2%.
Yeah, they're not taking 2% of the, 2%.
Board, do you guys have any questions about this? We can get this, I guess, on the agenda for next time. Mr. Cobb, would that give you enough time to look over it?
Yeah, I mean, my preliminary view shows that this one actually ends December 31st, 2009, so.
Well, that was the section that needed to happen, so.
Yeah, if, if, if the board wants, I would suggest, um.
I'm assuming that they would make it the end of this year because it seems to be an annual thing, uh, the way that they have the term ends December 31st, so I was assuming that.
Yeah, it ends as, as late in the year as possible.
Correct.
If the board is nervous about doing the, uh, renewing every year, you, we can actually redraft it so that it says that it automatically ends every year until the department, um, terminates it and that a lot of the time creates less paperwork for your, your clerk.
And that would be something you got to have.
But yeah, I can, I'm, I'm happy to go through and send comments to the board and send comments to, uh, PPR BD.
We, we might invite Todd to come up at the next meeting to talk. Sure. Yes, okay, so let's put it on the agenda for the 21st. Because I won't be there. He might know that. On the, um, the county's, kind of, or regional is going to collect the 3% use tax, what frequency is that collecting tax for, to the town? Is that monthly or quarterly?
Yes, once a month.
Okay, trustee Quinn, will you contact Todd then?
Certainly will.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll work with Matt and make sure that everything is in order by then. If you can come up and speak then you guys have any questions.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
And then.
Yes.
Comment on this, I, because I won't be here after my first. I fully support this, I think it'll be a great convenience for our residents and also, my view, increase our collections on use tax because, uh, regional building will be reviewing this and then do that data versus our assumptions if we do some close.
Yeah. Okay, that'll be great. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, item number E is so exciting, the new town hall update. Additional required expenses, not so exciting, but the move-in date and the grand opening ceremony. Trustee Stephen?
Um, I might leave the not so exciting part in my comments, um, towards the end and have the exciting part.
Trustee Quinn.
Trustee Quinn for the exciting part.
Trustee Quinn.
My, um, comments. Yeah, um, well, I, I plan on holding a, uh, meeting sometime next week, perhaps Monday or Wednesday, to try to, uh, get some folks together to figure out what this will look like, I think, for the opening ceremony, we're looking about in November. Give us a chance to get everything settled in there. I'm not quite sure what the seal date is going to be, it could be two, three weeks from now. So in order to have that, let's look at. Sorry, we could see a time for us to do that. Is that right? Because I, oh, partial through?
What, what do you have?
Certificate. See, I'm used to, okay, that's, that's probably, I'll be, it would be, although, for the permanent? Yeah. Regardless, it's going to take a little while for us to get it. I mean, we're not just going to throw out a party.
Exactly.
I'd like to, I'd like to see it occur sometime in November and we can settle on a date. I would, uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I would support either Monday or Wednesday evening. I think that might work out for people who want to attend.
For the committee meeting?
Yeah, for, um, I think Monday's, I'm just there. It's an issue of that, but, uh, perhaps on the 15th. And I don't know how exactly, so maybe.
I think they need to be.
Send out a notice for that.
Which day works as 30?
15th, 30th.
The 15th, October 15th, committee meeting?
Yes.
What time?
Uh, 6:00.
6:00 o'clock? At town hall?
Sure. And at that time, we can settle on a date, figure out exactly what that would be. And I did speak with, uh, uh, regional building, although he wasn't available. It's my understanding that there's a whole bunch of furniture that there would be no reason to, uh, do town hall and I just wanted to kind of get an idea of what's there. Apparently it's in a store here somewhere and I, I don't know what's in there, so I want to take a look and see what we have that somehow we deal with, other than what's in there. That might help. Where it's at.
We can try to find the space when you're in that room. That has the, you know?
I should talk to him Thursday.
Okay.
So, we'll see what, what they have. I really don't have, I'm not aware of anything else that was donated from the county. I'm not aware of any of that, so if anyone has that. Let me know when, bring it up.
Okay, so just to recap, everyone, committee meeting, October 15th at 6 o'clock for the new town hall. Public is welcome to come and help plan that ceremony. And I guess at this time we're thinking either November 8th or 15th, right? Trustee Quinn?
15th, Saturday, I think would be.
The best.
Would be good, yeah. I don't want to type of rushing.
Right. So tentatively, November the 15th. I did share with you that, uh, the Boy Scouts are interested in doing the flags that day. I did share with you that the Boy Scouts are interested in doing the flags that day. Also, Mr. Briggs Hill contacted me about the students maybe participating in a little ceremony, doing something. I know that they have some framed artwork or something to present to the town. And so we.
Can you relay that to the time?
Yeah. Why don't, why don't you guys have your meeting and come up with the time, schedule, or make sure that the teams go to work with everyone? And then just let me know. You know, because you all need to set a time, like it's going to be 10 o'clock in the morning, it's 9 o'clock.
Right, well, I was saying.
For the opening ceremony?
If you want to come to the committee.
Oh, okay.
That's a good question.
Oh, good idea, okay. I will call him and invite him to the meeting.
Okay, that's, that's great.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Okay, now trustee Stevens, the not so good.
Still have some comment needs in terms of the town hall. Particularly needs for guard rail, which total about $11,500,000 that will be required for our permanent CO as well as low voltage, both public structured wiring as well as audiovisual support for the meeting room. There's the third component there, which is security. But I think at this time, those other two items are a higher priority for us to consider. So I probably would suggest pending better financial perspective, us not making a decision tonight without knowing that we have the money within the budget, but be forewarned and standing by that as once we get those answers and we have a strong recommendation that we can afford some of those items that we may give you to a special meeting in the sports that we can make some decisions. If Charlie man can get that money.
With $11,000?
And the low voltage.
And the low voltage.
We've got proposals that are anywhere from $80,000 to $30,000. Which I don't think are appropriate suggestions, but breaking those down, there are some elements of that that we probably should. We probably do need to spend some money, but I certainly can't see us spending that money to.
Wasn't the low voltage outside of the. So there weren't no wire removals?
That's correct. We did the drops and so all the boxes are there and everything is.
What?
Exactly.
Did that guard rail come on? On the left field?
Uh, going into the, anticipated that that would be needed because of the grading and how that was happening during the rotating wall and the final elevation. So it was expected, but it was not included and may not be included, but it was not budgeted.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Stevens, for all you do with that. That's wonderful. And so move-in date, and let me hear that again. Trustee Quinn, what, what did you hear today? Tentative.
Well, I, I had spoken with Mr. Seaver. He had left me a message. I called back and he was all sad, but we just checked and he said, could be a few weeks, yeah.
Few weeks.
He didn't want to promise.
Right. Right, but people are probably wondering, so a couple of weeks?
He's hoping it's, it's my job, it's probably next week. I called it off.
A few and couple are the same, right?
No.
Okay.
I, I was kind of hoping, whether it's receiver, someone would be here to.
Right, the same. So, okay.
Have to take away from the time. Very good.
But the information I had from Fred Green on Friday was, was looking at mid-mixed weed as a temporary CO, which gets us moving stuff in there and sort of occupy. But that may or may not change, so I think it's not too early to start planning moving of stuff and figuring out how we can get the years out.
Okay. Okay. Item number F, under new businesses, the budget 2015 process, set dates for budgeted workshops. Title, trustee Stevens, typically we do this.
Have two or three budgeted workshops, work through the budget.
So, so guys, let's look at the calendar here. So we, we typically do them on different dates, trustee Stevens, or prior to board meeting meetings? What would we?
In the past, we cut Mondays. Also off Tuesdays. They're left to the sports.
Never going to. Not typically, no.
We don't, we don't typically.
They use him for this.
Yeah, no, the math guy.
I doubt Tony, they could do that.
Yeah. No. So we don't, we typically do like three budget workshops? Yeah. Okay, so. So we're shooting for a date, what is the latest date that we, the latest date, what does it need to be?
Okay, so first Tuesday, December adoption at the latest. So it's December 2nd.
By December 2nd.
So with that being said, I would say that the last meeting should be probably November, the week of November 17th, because Thanksgiving the week after, and then work backwards from there. Who wants, who wants three meetings? The 20th, the 3rd, the 17th, the 3rd, of that nature.
Right. The board meeting is on the 18th. Do you guys prefer to meet another night? Or do you want to meet prior to meeting for a workshop on that day? What do you want? I mean, do you have the 17th open or? Trustee Quinn, do you have the 17th open? Yeah. November 17th? Yeah, we're doing backwards, I'm going to start with the last number first. Okay, so let's shoot from Monday. Monday, November 17th. What time you guys? 5:30. It's 5:30. Okay. You guys are having.
Maybe a little later.
Later than 5:30? Okay, 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock? We'll have food, right? 6 o'clock?
We want to make sure everyone can get it.
Right. So do we want to do 6? Okay, 6 o'clock? Okay, when, okay, let's look, you guys are having too much fun. Let's look, um, the next time, when is the next workshop? Monday's work for you, correct? Indeed. Okay, I was about to say, we probably need to find out, Monday's work for you, okay? Do we want, so we're going to, the week of the 11th or the 10th? Do we want to have it work up then? Okay, Monday, the 3rd?
3rd and October 32.
Okay. So October 20th? Can you do October 20th? Okay, well, let's do the 3rd, let's write the 3rd, let's go backwards, November 3rd. November 3rd at 6 o'clock? Okay? And then. That's probably going to be about date the 20th for me as well. Can we do the 21st, can we do the 21st prior to, well, we don't have court, right? No. Can we do the 21st prior to our board meeting, you guys?
Uh, trustee Batsman.
Oh, you're having to do that, okay.
What is the 27th?
The 27th? It's a Monday, the 27th, that's fine for me. Do you have Monday, the 27th available? Okay, so we're going to do, let's do Monday, the 27th. So our budget workshops. Same time. Okay, so just to reiterate, budget workshops, Monday, the 27th at 6 o'clock. Monday, November 3rd at 6 o'clock, and Monday, November 17th at 6 o'clock. And then with the ratification and the adoption of that on the 2nd of December. Correct? Good. Thank you. When July? Okay. Um, reports, mayor? Don't move me, come on. Report. Yes.
There's.
Oh, there's new businesses.
One more, one more outstanding.
Yes, new business.
Yes. But, oh, I have chief brand day I go up to as well, but. They have useful workers they have. This is disposition the case that had to do with feeding wildlife. In this case, what I understand to be a resident goose, as well as some other waterfowl. There seems to be a few issues with feeding them, whether it's actually understood by all that nobody should be feeding them. Seems to be that the history may have been that somebody was doing it on behalf of the town and now is no longer citizens and visitors and all kinds of people feeding wildlife. I can tell you that right now, the town code is very clear that you are not allowed to feed wildlife. Ducks, geese. And larger, all wet pears, and cougars, all kinds of fun stuff. It seems that there is at least one resident goose who is not a wild animal, but is more domesticated. And Ms. Pennell has come to the board prior to this, after receiving the citation, has asked for permission to continue to feed the goose. Problem being now that the other wild geese are eating the food as well. So there seems to be at least some reason that we need to figure out how we can either amend the ordinance to make it so that this one particular goose can be fed, or we can make it really clear that none of these geese are be fed. The ones that need help need to be removed so they can get help somewhere else. But I, I informed the court that he would at least bring this up and discuss it. To the extent that there is some kind of agreement that the board could reach with exactly how to handle the situation. I'd be curious to see what this.
So do you have that ordinance? I mean, do you have the code right there?
I don't, I can, I can get it really quick.
Does it specifically mention ducks? Any. I think that the code is anybody, she's got it, I guess.
Yeah, it's section 7, dash 1, 81. And it says, feeding of wildlife, no person shall knowingly leave or store any refuse, food product, pet food, grain, or salt in any manner which can constitute a lure to, attraction to, or enticement of wildlife. It's pretty broad. Saying if you leave it out, if you drop it, if you're tossing it to them, if you're hand feeding them, you shouldn't be doing that to all wildlife. This section, contrary to other sections, isn't limited to bears, animal animals, or anything like this. This deals with all wildlife. There, as Ms. Pennell said, that this isn't necessarily wildlife, this is a domesticated Chinese goose. And, and so it seems to be that. Ordinance, figuring out what I want to do, okay?
Well, that's true. Pretty good, that is, I think I've heard arguments either way, as far as the waterfowl. I, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, open it up to a public hearing, having hearing with the town. It's their, it's their town. I don't have an issue with that. Whatever, whatever that gets at this, you know, would support it, whether it be excluding the ducks, you know, or, you know. However, that needs to look, I think we should hear from the town.
Okay. You guys. Yes, that question, unenticing, is that for like hunters? Is that law law written for hunters as opposed to?
Well.
Communities that have.
I think this one tried to catch it all. So it says, you can't store any ref, any refuse, food product, pet food, grain, or salt. And, and I think the salt, like, being left out, I would, you know. The Northeastern states you can do that, you can hunt with salt, lure them or attract them, and entice them to come in. I think that the way that this is written is wide, wide, widely enough that it can catch anything. It can catch you dumping it, knowing that there's a high probability that they're going to come with that. All the way to leaving a can of peanut butter open outside to say, here's squirrels coming.
Trustee Quinn.
Mr. Crowe. I think there's some, a little bit of discrepancy with what the car parks division considers, you know, about that. And that I think their, their rules say that you cannot feed or entice anything that can be considered a food animal or a game animal. Because what we're talking about even there, you're talking, can't feed squirrels, you know, as far as it goes. But under Department of Parks, you know, body division, body, they don't include those. If it's not a specific, you know, game animal or a specific food source. So we may have some issues with our own little pillage, the bodies making in line.
Yeah, I think this is another example of that. There are laws that apply to state, which are obligated by the Division of Wildlife. And since they say, I was speaking with Ms. Pennell about this, but, you know, the wildlife, Division of Wildlife says, you can go out and hunt geese during these seasons, you can have as many as the way you can take them. And, and that's put on the whole state. And then in places like little cities at the time, now big cities like Denver say, we don't want you shooting guns in the city limits. So although you can hunt for these animals during this time, the local law that says you actually can't discharge a firearm within our city limits actually trumps the ability to hunt this. The same here, you have the Division of Wildlife saying, yeah, it's actually okay to, to feed ducks and geese, but you have your local law that says it's not. So there's way less.
Actually, the division says you can't feed ducks. You cannot, because they're considered food source. Oh, and so it's baiting and stuff, and so they're in agreement with that. But are, there are some, I mean, there's some obvious issues about, you know, other things like I was bringing up. If we're going to enforce them, definitely issues with squirrels, you know, other animals and stuff like that. But they do say you can't warn, feed them or anything. And so, and other, I know other municipalities are considered a conditions, you know, to feed them, to keep them around too. And yet, we have plenty of little kids bringing, right now, to feed the ducks, you know. So I think it is also for interpretation, I agree with Mr. Quinn, maybe we ought to just get a majority. And then come down, you know, as to the proper procedures to follow on this one. Because I can see what, you know. Hard to say, it's hard, it's hard to enforce, number one.
I think it's extremely hard to enforce, I think we now have some of these non-domesticated geese that are depending on this.
That is correct, which is why they do not want anything going on like that. Because you habituate them, you know.
So now, which is not, you have people who are feeding them and all of a sudden you cut the food source off. That could be an issue too, so. I'm not going to say that I didn't beat the board in this decision.
At least we'll, at least we'll find another place to get natural waterfowl.
And I think we're very generous about you.
But I can see, I can sort of, because I can see that, you know, too many hand, there's six, like, and also some. See that being, but they. by the, uh, the town.
Yes, Mr. Pennell.
Kind of tricky situation.
Mr. Pennell.
Well, based on what you've read, he's been very busy with all the hunting bird feeders that everybody in town has, and, and as a food, food source.
Well, section B actually specifically, uh, exempts.
That's most of our feeders, so.
Oh, he's not as busy, but he will be busy.
Okay, so.
She says that's the definition of a not feeding them. Yeah. Yeah, it's only April through November, for those of you who don't have the code in front of you, don't feed them.
Don't feed them. No, actually, what the code says, April, then November, the feeders have to be raised to a certain height. You can feed on the rest of the year, you can feed with songbirds and migratory birds all winter, yeah? But during the bear months, yeah, it can be raised, okay.
I have a temper issue. I'm the one that takes a ticket. Um, Ms. Pennell, but I understand the need, we have a domestic animal that has to eat. I don't know what kind of resources it has, and it's not able to fly. Cause I see these Canadians on top of signs, on top of buildings, they travel, they migrate into, migrate out. What I'd like to suggest, until the board can review it, amend it however they want to do this, is to allow her to feed this goose. Now, there is a way to do this, cause I witnessed this before, this goose is the alpha goose, is the dominant goose. If there's a reasonable portion for this goose, this goose is not gonna let any of the Canadian males get that file, I've seen that before. The file he rests on, the rest of them, he's, he's the big kid on the block. But just to keep the goose, this specific Chinese domestic goose, in good shape until the board can review this, I, I think it's a. That's just my opinion.
In that scenario, is that, is it perpetual, or is there in time that you say that?
This Chinese goose is so used to eating at five or six o'clock every day, okay? I don't even know if he eats through the day, uh, somebody throws him scraps from pantry or whatever, that goose more than. Day itself, especially during these months when it starts to get cold, so we gotta figure out how to address the problem of this one goose. Feed one cub or half cub, a cup and a half, if it's goose feed, I think it's enough where he'll digest that, it'll be off the ground. The others aren't gonna stand a chance to get, I'm just trying to find that fit.
It sounds like it's outside. Being that it's not.
Feeding a domestic goose is a thing, and you're not allowed.
Yeah, and that's wild.
We need to be able to lift that to.
That.
The one.
A one.
Based on the fact that he's the dominant goose, so I've never seen anybody chase him off anything. I think standards are easy, he'll eat his own food. That's just, the only fix I can.
Yes. Uh, do you all know Roy, I mean, Roy George, the Colonel Oscar, the General, he's been here for six years. And this is Roy, Rudy was his best friend, Roy learned everything from Rudy, especially how to nurture the baby geese. And to take care of them, any little babies, Roy is the protector, and he's such a sweetheart, he calls everybody, when I take him down corn, it's his corn, not mine, and he calls everybody to come to dinner, and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty hard, it's pretty hard with Roy, my, my thing too, I think it's a great idea until we can figure things out, if I could be, you know, because he, I have all the papers that he's a domest- domesticated Chinese goose, but above all, he is our town's unofficial beloved mascot that everybody comes in to see now, even from Denver, they all want to see Roy when they come in. He's just been here for a long time, the problem is that Green Mountain Falls has fed the Canadians for what, thirty, fifteen years, I know back in nineteen fifty-five, when I was a kid, they were feeding the, the geese. These geese are very, uh, probably the happiest geese around, the problem is, and I've got something on that which I won't go into now, but I do have it that if a town has fed the geese over the years, you cannot stop cold turkey, because you gradually taper off. If you stop cold turkey, they can starve, now our geese probably maybe haven't gotten that much, they get tons of bread, and I never feed them bread, I just feed them the very most natural grains without preservatives, and I've gone away from total crack corn, because the natural grains are better and put a little down. I mainly do that to get them off the road in the summer, because the minute twilight comes, you can't see the geese, and especially the babies. And so when you, when you wiggle that little grain bay, they all come to the north, north side. In one area, they settle down for the night, and you can get them off the road, once in a while, like Labor Day, it was unbelievable, because they didn't wanna get off the road, and it was pretty.
Well, Ms. Pennell, you and I talked a, a little bit about that, if they can't see the geese on the road, they probably can't see you on the road too.
Well, I wave a lot.
We don't really want you on the road directing goose or traffic, or goose traffic out there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I, like I said, it don't have to be the board's position, uh, I think there is a middle ground, but I don't think we wanna go so far as to say, keep directing traffic out there, especially.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I don't usually get in the middle of the road, I think I was Labor Day. I'm sorta, I'm sorta on the side, but, you know, that's, that's, I, I know we can figure something. Good, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that about Roy, I can continue feeding Roy, Roy a little bit, that would be great.
I'd like to say that the person who goes to Lake Perry, single or not, there is worse things than goose poop in the lake, which I picked up, I picked up dirty diapers, used feminine products, uh, I had a huge bag of fishing竿 that has disappeared out of my car, but I think this, just on one thing, just on one, oh my god, now I think we need to stop fighting as a town and just be, and try to work together here, I'm willing to go down every night, I'll help Ann pick up goose poop, whatever it takes. If the kids wanna eat them, bread, I mean, you just can't tell people, they can't come down and enjoy the lake, people have brought their kids down. I don't like it, but that's what they do, I mean, people's children went down to the lake this summer, ripped branches out of the tree, I had to give the marshal some of the tree that had been planted with grant money, these kids were just in the tree ripping the branches out. I mean, destruction everywhere, there's a lot of problems besides the geese, there's a lot of fish to fry here, but we have to work together as a town and figure it out, and come together and stop all this fighting on the empty, it's disgusting. I mean, surely, we can come to some agreement, where those of us that can, I mean, there's two thousand cigarette butts on the ground, doesn't that offend anybody? It offends me. But I have our brothers, and I can't pick, I only, I have to pick my battles, I can only bend over so many times when I'm down there, and I can't pick up everything. But, let's try to come together and take it, and, you know, not fight about this stuff.
Well, you know, the, yeah, the, the, uh, I think the, the thing is that, that our, our one summer, we took fishing line off a twenty geese. Emma still hobbles, but she's doing okay, she needs a little extra care, and, and we have one who's now that has fishing line in his chest, in his chest, yeah.
It's a bull.
Well, Ms. Pennell, there's nothing against prohibiting you guys from cleaning up, banning them, removing fishing lines, any, any stuff like that. The concern right now is, okay, in the, that whether you should be doing that.
But man, how are you gonna stop, I mean, people, all the summer long have thrown pizza, tortillas, hot cheetos, canned corn, canned peas, I mean, it's unbelievable, what people are throwing into that lake.
It, well, throwing into the lake and feeding.
Or on the ground.
So, I, like I said, I think that there's something that the board needs to do, at least temporarily, and then come back and probably revisit this more permanently as well.
So, Board, I'd like to propose we have a public hearing at our next meeting, um, to hear from our citizens about what they, their thoughts on this. And we might, you know, depending on that, we'll take a look at our ordinance to see if that needs to be updated or changed, or whatever. So, I would like to propose we do that, um, first, and then the second part of that is figuring out, like, what Chief Bradley said, what we're gonna do in the interim between now and then.
I support that.
Yeah.
The children too, you know, the children of our town have done truly wonderful, they, probably ten of them watched the two nests. Every day, they would not let any other children get near those nests, they protect the two nests, and they, they, they just, I, I wanna say that they were, they watched those little eggs, and then the hatching.
But you know, the children learn from you as our parents, and people hear parents bickering about this or that or the other, that is what the kids are learning, some little boys yesterday were harassing the geese and screaming and yelling and chasing them, and I went up there and asked them to stop, and, and I asked them, why are you doing that? Cause of all this goose poop that people are talking about, now where are they hearing this? Be, be a good steward to your kids, and, you know, don't teach them to hate the wildlife.
So, again, as it stands now, in our law, in our ordinance prohibits the feeding of these geese, and we need to figure out as a community and as a town, what we're gonna do. I propose again, we have a public hearing, and then in the meantime, as Trustee Quinn mentioned, I would totally support the feeding of Roy, and let Ann do that, um, in the meantime. Yes. Me too, um, I just wanna confirm what they had set that public hearing for, is that? Twenty first. Okay, yes.
I was curious why, if they've been feeding the ducks for sixty years, um, no one has ever made an issue of this before, sixty years is a long time.
I think if you come to the public hearing, and you can definitely share your comment on the twenty first.
You know, it's the goose poop, and, and I'm gonna be over there cleaning that placebo, at least twice a week, and you're gonna see a big change in the placebo and around the lake, so.
Y'all poop is everywhere.
And, and Board, just so that we're really clear, if, if you, from what I understand, you're saying, you're, Grant, um, Ms. Pennell, uh, commission to feed the goose mayor of, domestic goose mayor of, that's, you know, one pile, one place, and feed one bird, not.
One pile, to feed one bird, okay?
Okay, because I, no doubt that the, that the judge is probably watching this or listening, so, you know, we told him that we would make sure that there was a very clear agreement between you and the board, and if we exactly what authority you have to feed just the domesticated goose in one pile, and that's it, uh, seven piles, feeding all the other ones, it's disgusting, okay? And then, in the interim, at the next meeting, we'll hold a public hearing and hopefully make even more clear, uh, lines on what you can and can't do with the ducks and the geese, and, and even probably specifically, uh, him again, and address how we treat him going forward.
Hi, I just wanted to go real quick, I can appreciate, um, the suggestion about feeding this Rudy, but I sort of question the validity of the citation, because the way it worded in section B is that you're allowed to feed birds, and by every definition, a goose and a duck is a bird. So there's no differentiation.
Let me, let me stop right there, birds left, as, uh, former mayor, put him pointed out, in time between April and November.
Yes.
She was feeding on the ground, so we're not gonna go back and retry a case that's already the disposition I dealt with, but that's why that doesn't apply, it's the food that's on the ground.
Okay, but I don't think there's any kind of suggestion in terms of feeding them, you know, in the water, where a bear couldn't get to the food, where they're being created from some of the.
I, I'm pretty sure a bear can walk out and get them pretty far, just into that lake, so.
What she referred to as like the broad border, has feeders in the water.
Yeah, they have those feeders, and, and again, I think that's all a good idea to discuss at the public hearing.
And how are all your people, the tourists, or the people who don't live here, how are they going to know?
Again, I think this is all great stuff at the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd say, y'all plan on being here on the twenty first, okay, and then we can have these conversations and discussions then.
There's a lot to think about.
I know.
In the interim, does anybody else need to be worried about getting a citation?
The only person that has.
Right, it's the same law that's on the books.
Yeah, yeah, the law is on the books.
The same law is on the books, it was just the rule of the last citation, so, the law in Green Mountain Falls, as, as both the municipal prosecutor and the town attorney, who is gonna tell you, the law says, no person shall knowingly leave or store any food product, refuse, pet food, grain, or salt, I'm gonna say that anything you're dumping from a bag, that's gonna cost, uh, which would constitute a lure to, attraction to, or enticement of wildlife. And wildlife, this, as it stands until it changes, is gonna be as broadly as possible, so, the rule is, in layman's terms, don't feed the ducks and geese, at all.
I, I understand.
Okay.
What I'm wondering is if this moratorium applies to Ann only, until the board, besides, um.
Yes, see, like, there's, there's no signs anywhere telling anybody that, I mean, I've heard some, I've heard.
Okay, with, without going too far, it sounds like there's been a lot of mortals. You have a police chief who is more than capable of determining when to issue a citation for you, or put that in his hands. And I think the rest of this stuff can be held, and I think it's very, very crucial to the public hearing that we're not holding right now. So in the interest of moving forward, I think this, Ann understands what she's supposed to do, the board understands what authorities have granted her, we've kept your municipal judge happy by, I think it's time to, to, to move forward, unless someone else has something to do with this pretty narrow issue right now, the broad issue's gonna come in the public hearing.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along, reports, um, any report I have, and I, Mr. Cullinan will probably address this about Team Rubicon. So, I have no report, so, Team Quinn, do you have a report? Okay, Trustee Butts.
Let, uh, Mayor talk about if, during her party.
No reports, no reports. Trustee Alice. Trustee Diner, no. Trustee Stevens.
Uh, I think the ACG and RT must be tomorrow, some reports from them, uh, regional building, I mean, following, uh, and as Mr. President stated, did attend the Regional Business Alliance, uh, meeting session in Washington next week, which was very difficult, and fifty percent, uh, region there.
Trustee Cook.
Two items, and Mr. Cullinan will probably follow up on two of those, number one coming up is still the issue of whether to purchase a pool cover, and whether we have the funds to do so. We're kind of running, uh, the time limit here, uh, for, you know, as far as being able to do that. I'm wondering if we do have the funds, I understand we, you know, still have many, um, funded needs at the town hall. The cost for the pool cover was three eight hundred dollars, in my opinion, it's, it's a wise spending of money to check what we've done to the pool this year. But we need to have kind of a decision whether we can spend the money to do so. And if not, then we have to come up with an alternative, and we'll have to cover that, you know, this year. As far as that, hopefully not lose ground while we're doing it. The pool cover does assist in keeping the water in the pool, you know, the pool won't not freeze like an ice cube all the way to the bottom. So, it keeps the water at a constant temperature, which helps protect the need for the painting and the concrete that has been done in it. Uh, it keeps debris out of it, and just keeps it much better shaped, so we have less maintenance to think about for next year. So, where to put it, but just kind of get, gotta decide some soon on whether to spend the money to do so or not. And number two, uh, this year, you know, we've had a tremendous amount of runoff in sediment. And we're looking at the, the need to dredge part of the lake again. And I am not familiar with the history, I'm one of those who died, Mr. Ram did some work on it, you know, as far as dredging carnage, but it certainly filled in a lot this year. It needs to be done again, which means draining the lake. And looking at what would be with all the people that come up toward the lake, I'm wondering what, you know, the board thinks about a timeline for doing so. Because we certainly have to let it drain and dry a little bit before we can get in there to do some work as far as removal and sediment, but it has filled in quite a bit. And we need to definitely deepen the lake.
How many hours?
Two or three hours, yeah. We're talking probably a couple of times and stuff, you know, as far as that goes.
A couple of months.
We can drain it quickly, but we need to have it dried out so that we can do it quickly. And so, we definitely wanna see them before it starts to freeze over, obviously. So, just to head up to the board, you know, we need extra water to do that. Showing that somewhere around November.
But then it wouldn't be frozen for Christmas or all of that?
Well, it depends, when we get it out, we can refill it as soon as possible, you know. So, it's a matter of doing it or, you know, waiting till afterwards, when you have ice on it, it makes it more difficult to get it in there to do, to drain it out. Then you basically have to wait, you know, in March. And, uh, then drain it, we're not in the springtime. Because you still need it in the autumn time, because, you know, why have you cranking it in there getting started? So, it's a matter of, I know ice skating is fun, hockey games are fun, but it does need some maintenance, so it's up on your radar about, uh, when to do it, I mean, we've got about a month's worth of time, if we're gonna do it before Christmas, we've got about a month's worth of time to work, and we're not doing it yet, so just about the timing of it, you know, because the lake gives the ice feature in the winter time, we can also, or wait until spring to, we're knowing that we have to do it.
It's such a, it's such a, uh, they draw tours to draw for years, and people really like. And we need to protect it, to keep it, you know, safe, to keep it, um, livable for the fish and for the other kinds of stuff that go there, we could, the sediment. Yeah.
There used to be geese. Fish, yeah. May not, may not, ma'am, just like, just like, please, okay?
And so, just the, the level has come up so much because of the recent funding of the last couple of years. You know, then you, your fish habitat isn't there anymore, and the lake level isn't where it should be. And so, they don't, you know, do what they're supposed to do, and that's, you know, all that stuff that we've had in the years, and then prevent a maintenance for upcoming years for the, you know, any type of sediment that's gonna flow in there again. But, you know, and then we could take advantage of this opportunity and hopefully fix the block wall, do a couple of other things, you know, repair the deck a little bit, get all these things done. While we're doing this, it'd be a great opportunity for that. But we probably need a month's time for it to dry. So, we need to find the slowest time to do that, you know, before it does freeze, you know, where it's not gonna impact so much.
So, it has to be totally unfrozen before you do this?
Oh, yeah.
So, we wait it until spring?
Then you're gonna be getting close back into your, your summer season again, you know, you, you could.
Like the month of April and May?
Uh, I don't think so.
It won't dry as well.
It won't dry as well.
You know, because we're getting past into the spring rains again.
So, what I'm thinking, when I look at the calendar though, is that if you talk about the slow period, it's not the slow period of the lake, it's your slow period.
Well, it's not my slow period, it's your tourism, your fall.
You're about to get busy here in November, December with, uh.
Yeah, well, yeah, that too.
So, uh, what do you see as outside resources that you're gonna need? Um, do you have the equipment to do it yourself, or is this on a complete contract job?
Uh, no, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to do it ourselves.
Okay.
You know, use the town's dump truck, and use the town's loader, and that kind of thing to, uh, to try to get it done. I kind of know we get some help, but.
Yes, does that, do we leave room for the wildlife that's in the lake, or do you dry the whole thing, you know, completely, so all the habitat?
We probably have to relocate the fish.
How would that be done?
I don't know, that's a, that's a new thing to me.
I mean, it seems to, that the nature is.
By this time of the year, I doubt there's very many fish left in there.
Yeah, I know they ditched a lot out.
There's been fish out, but the division of wildlife is not restocking at this time of the year. So, whatever fish there are will be down to the south creek, but I doubt that there's very few, I bet there's very few fish left in that lake.
And what if you run?
What if I run? Well, then somebody down river, downstream shouldn't catch a lot of fish. But the division will be restocking in the spring anyway. So.
I just, I'm amazed that the, the lack of concern for wildlife in this community, I really am. I mean, the ducks bring in, the tourism, and the money, and the joy, and then somebody wants to rob people of all this.
Well, the flip side is they're not doing the maintenance on the lake, and have it just keep filling up from the bottom.
But there's probably a way to leave room for existing wildlife.
Well, it is, they just send it in now, it's, they're still not ready.
Yes, I'm dying, the fishermen told me just a week ago that they had put more fish in that lake, and I mean, I don't know whether that's true or not. The people are still catching quite a few fish, it's kind of shocking, this kind of.
I am shocked, because usually the division cuts that off.
It's, I, I said, I don't know.
I can certainly, oh, usually, they can also come out, we can also see if they can come out and do a, they can do a simple stun and collect the fish again.
Okay, back to this one, if you cover the pool, then can the water that's in it be used the following year, or do you have to drain and start over?
No, it would have to be drained and start over.
One way or the other.
One way or the other.
Okay, yes.
When the division of wildlife stocks the lake, they notify the town, they also put it in the newspaper. So, if, if they, if they've just, if they've, if they've stocked fish in there recently, you would see an influx of people, because that's what happens, the minute that that shows up in the newspaper, you see the lake, the, uh, the banks of the lake, it's filled up with people who come fishing, because it's about as close as you can get to stock fish.
So.
And I have seen no notice in the paper, I have seen nothing.
Yes, we have, I already.
And it is the practice of that to stop basically, obviously.
Well, and they always notify the town.
Exactly, and they have not notified us that they've done any stopping. Yes, Mr. Ram?
Uh, I was wondering, uh, when you, uh, what you're thinking of draining and then fixing the rocks that are coming down around the placebo, is that what you're saying? Is there, is there anything really toxic when you fix the rocks that would affect the geese?
It's just cement.
Oh, it's just cement, yeah. Oh, okay, I didn't know what you were using. Well, and this has been done, this is not a new, we've dredged the lake before, so, this is, yeah, that's a little thing, so we're gonna need to make a decision probably on the best timing for it. Oh, sorry, Mr. Ram, I didn't.
I, I just, uh, there's been so much sand that has filled in the bottom of the, the lake, the fountain now is no overflowing, it's actually sitting on, it's on the filter, and it's, it's, uh, Rock Day made, paid money to fix it a few years ago, I'm not too concerned about that. And so, we probably should. Well, we have the works, we have the work.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, um, Mr. Colanane, how long, well, you might not know, how long does it typically take once it's drained to fill back up? Does anybody know the timeframe? Matt, do you know?
Probably closer to a week.
To fill it back up?
Yeah.
And how is that, that just happens through the treatment?
You turn the valve, it runs up water from the.
Yeah, I mean, some of the part of her involved, the wildlife, it's not like they're scooping water up and throwing it out, they're just letting it go down the creek.
Okay.
So, those fish kind of just say, oh, all right, we're out.
Okay, so they have that's it?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they essentially close this valve and open that, and so.
Thank you.
Now, there's more concern about wildlife, they're just, it's getting a public hearing for wildlife, so.
Thanks. Mr. Colanane, when would you prefer to do this? Would you, what is your thought process? Would, would you prefer to wait until the spring? Do you wanna go ahead and get it done? Do you think we can have it done by Christmas? This is such a pretty place in the holidays and.
I wouldn't ruin that, what are your thoughts there? This is a new area, we take a chance. This March, the ice was off of.
Okay.
You know, it was that, you know, it's, it's a shot of dark, but it would be the month of April we lose, which is not a lot, I mean, the latest would be the month of April, but I would pick the March or April to take. And probably do okay. Just right up this, want everybody to be aware that we do have to do this process.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would probably support early, early spring versus now. Actually, I mean, if, if there's not much depth in that lake, then it's gonna freeze solid, in case there, there, or gonna freeze solid. That's probably what's gonna happen. And I, but I would, I would question, I, I believe that has great water, and, um, I don't know if it would take court that long to dry out. The floor saves me in there, because you do have to sell it off. It's not like a one thing, you have to sink that fish.
Just a thought. I'm not sure what it's, my understanding is. I'm not sure if anyone else has what's playing, I don't know, I don't know where.
I, I, the way I understood it was, that would be solid off.
Okay.
Just keep there, definitely anytime at all.
The drainage of the lake will be in the spring then.
So, we're leaving it at that later.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Would the court have to know if there's any weddings planned at that time, so that, or if I have a date, so you don't.
Well, definitely, there, no, we're not.
You don't have weddings going on?
No, not right now, until the.
Nothing's set up for you?
No.
We'll inform them, make sure that that's not, you know, contradictory, because that's a big draw for folks, you know, for weddings.
Yeah, and that, in the springtime is when they have the weddings too.
And if, you know, that does happen, they would be informed, you know, that the lake is under maintenance right now, if they still wanna have it, they can.
Oh, really?
That's their choice, that's their choice. I would.
I don't think I'd want it.
I would also recommend, uh, might be put together an action plan, kind of, kind of layout how that's going to happen, so it is, you've been wondering. And then you could do some research, find the best process.
Okay. Then the next order that we really need to give direction to, Mr. Colanane, is that pool cover, you guys, because of the weather coming.
Was there not a pool cover ready?
There is, well, it's not, it's just a cover that goes up, it's not like an official pool cover that does the protecting that he's talking about, there is a pool cover.
What's the difference?
In this one, there's, we have no tie downs for it or anything, we get any snow, it's a lot of, a lot of, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to keep it twice. That's why, we would have to build some kind of a structure anyway, it's not custom, like, to make the cover work and put it on angle, because the way the snow comes down, it forces it. It would be a major.
Yes, like it wasn't, it's like, it's great, it's still great.
Yeah, and that didn't.
It's hard, it's still great.
If we don't get this, if we don't get this specific type of cover, which is anchored, pivoted around, and those supportive ways, you know, so we will have to drain the pool this fall. Use a temporary tarp to cover it this year, and then we, you know, and redo it next year.
What's the downside of that?
The downside is just the wear and tear of it being out in the open and the weather on the paint and coffee that was put in this year. There's no guarantee, because of the freezing, the situation that happens all the time, you know, cold weather, hot weather, causes attention and contraction more. When you keep it full of water, you limit that from going on. And you keep it a steady, constant temperature in the, in the pool.
It's like.
No, it's not even, no, it dries when I free call it out.
It is the only cool.
And every step, we have a roof, we have a wall, we've got snow.
So.
We take all the savings, possibly, out of the lake.
If you, um, so guys, we're gonna need to make some decisions.
And I know money's a tiny stuff, but we're just gonna need to know which way to go with the pool.
Right.
You know, as of right now, because we don't wanna let it be an open, if we get into bad weather.
So, there's, there's no priority, who might. So.
And we're still looking at the budget, you know, and compensating.
That was all likely, so we.
I think we should jump ahead to, uh, finding some areas. Because I think that's, uh, crucial to this.
If we were to get the pool cover, does it take time to make it, it's custom fit for this pool? And how long does it take them to make it?
They're saying, right now, uh, it would be two to six weeks.
Two to six weeks?
Yeah, it changed because of the, the influx of everyone wanting to pool cover it. We would've worked it earlier in the summer, two weeks. But it, that's, it could change, it could be a little bit different.
So, are you saying the problem I've been able to?
I've been, I've been through it.
Okay.
And just as a note, I did experience with these types of pool covers, and it was a good success, you know, when I worked at Crystal Park, it did, you know, saved the pool, you don't have to be near as much clean maintenance to the pool on the inside, as you would if you left it open. Just save the pool.
My concern, Board, is we spent so much money fixing it and getting that, taking care of it. I would hate for it to go, you know, deteriorate simply because we didn't do what we needed to do with it.
While I agree, I, I still feel that we have enough budgetary information, uh, for us, yeah. And, uh, have to weigh the priorities of, for example, this railing for town hall is almost a must-do thing, so that we can get our stupid lobby to come up with another budget. Pretty eight hundred dollars short of that railing, we cannot occupy town hall, it's a huge consequence. Yeah, I'd rather drag a feet on the pool cover, which is desirable, but optional. And focus, I agree, make, I agree with you, just, when I just, we just be looking at the budget to see if there is, is a way to.
So, at this time, we'll hold off now, what happens if it freezes? And there's no pool cover, the water freezes?
It's just, it's gonna freeze, it's not afraid to kill it, but it's gonna, you know, freeze.
Okay.
You know, you're still gonna get junk and stuff going in there, you know.
Okay.
It's gotta maybe.
Okay. Could we put that other little tarp over it?
Sure, we can do that separately.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna hold off then, to be a better. Yes.
Um, several meetings back, we talked briefly about, um, applying the chemicals to the roads. Said we're gonna be experimenting with, and what's the schedule for that?
We're still looking into that, you know, that's pending on the budget right now. Um, so, we can't spend any money because the town hall's going on right now. So, that, that, uh, we use for PPR TA, uh, it does get reimbursed, but, uh, we're still cutting it off in pattern. Gotta make sure this is prepared, until we can do anything else right now.
And what about the, the rest of the roads? You mentioned the fact that you were probably gonna experiment on a couple of roads. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming that that's not gonna be nearly as expensive as applying man chloride to the whole town. But, uh, there, there was money budgeted to, for a couple of different applications of man chloride uh, in, uh, last year's budget, and, uh, which had nothing to do with the town hall. And, uh, I, I, I guess I'd like to, I'd like to understand why we're not, uh, we haven't applied any chemical, man chloride or any other for that matter, to the roads this year. I think it's, uh, they're, they're not in great shape, and they need to, they need some, uh, they need some help, but whether we experiment with another product or not, which I, and I agree that, that, that that's probably a prudent idea to get, to get a good idea about what we can use it for, what cost, but we do know what the man chloride does. And, and it, uh, it was budgeted. And, and it, uh, it was budgeted for this year, and there's no reason why we shouldn't. And, uh, coming into the winter time, uh, maglorite does have, to a point, does help to melt snow, uh, which cuts down on, on the maintenance time for the roads and plumbing snow. And so, uh, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that get scheduled, and I'd like to see that get done. And also like to know, uh, when we're gonna, when we're gonna do the experiments and, and whatever those rules are.
Like I, like I reiterated already once before, um, we're waiting until this Town Hall is situated. There's a lot of monies going out there that we don't have that money right now. You guys should understand that we don't have that money for more than...
Well, I understand, but you can't, you can't use that PPRTA, you don't have anything but roads.
That's correct, but we have to pay for that first, before, and then they reimburse us.
Well, what you do get reimbursed.
Yeah, but that takes time, before you get that...
I understand it.
I'm sure, John, that I'm working on the same issue at the same time. As long as we're, we've gotta wait on the dollar reimbursement, you know? Because our money's tied up, as I understand it, through those, that we are paying for, making the payments to Mr. Green. Okay? So we don't have, we're looking at not having the money upfront to purchase then to get reimbursed by PRC or ITA. Once we get the reimbursement in from DOLA, then that process starts worse. Because then we have the upfront money to do that, that's my understanding. And so, yes, I'm trying to get to the bottom of that too.
Okay, see, see, my understanding was, as far as the town, is that the, the bill is submitted, and then the, and then that bill is submitted to DOLA, and then they, they, they just put the money in the town's account, and then, and then it gets paid out of that account, not the other way.
We haven't seen it that way. We don't see it, it's been worked on, the town is sending the money out and waiting for reimbursement. And sending it out and waiting for reimbursement. So at least, you know, as we told, signed up with them, they're no less than four sources that are funding this building. So right now, financials are complicated to say the least. So waiting and adding another reimbursement agreement, where we send money out, wait for PPRTA to reimburse us. The town is, is saying, let's just hang on, if we can, right now, and not do that. Um, it's not snowing right now, so that's good, but, you know. They're being pushed, just as, as you guys are pushing up to get things in order so we're all set, and that we can go back to where we spent the funds and get reimbursed. Rather than saying, well, we can't really do anything, because we haven't been reimbursed yet.
Thank you. Okay, so you're done, trustee cut. Okay, staff reports.
Me? I would have preferred to wait till next spring, maybe this month, to get mine, and have some more better information. Okay?
Okay. Mr. Pauline?
Yes, alright. Uh, number one, uh, our new skater that we got, I mean, I just got it serviced by John here, this was his first service, his first two fifty, it was at that service. And everything was okay with the, no any issue. I was able to talk to the mechanic, and learn some insights about how tracks work and anything there. It was very helpful. Um, we put the ad in the local paper and the town website, um, for the part-time maintenance position. And we're just waiting on, um, applications to get back to that. Um, I also, yes?
May I, just to say, so how many applications have you received so far?
Uh, we're still looking to see what we have right now, I'm gonna look at the website to see what we got.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's enough, okay.
Um, I've also started to work up a list, uh, working on projects for the slower times in the winter, uh, winter projects. I've also been working on, organizing and cleaning up in that loft, the shop, to kind of understand what, what we have up there, inventory, and to kind of make it a little more accessible. I have got the beacon installed in the skater, I've been working on both that and the Nissan pickup, the beacons on there. I got the blue and the flashlights, the blue with the anchor parts on that. Um, a few weeks ago, I met with representatives from the, uh, fire recovery to discuss options, plans, and grant possibilities for some of the projects that we have, and that we, uh, that we may need. And those, uh, the guys that were there, I don't know which are the name, but, um, Pete Luichich, he's a pledge recovery project manager. Um, these guys are all the county guys. Uh, R.C. Smith is a recovery manager, and then Shelley Kobo, she's an assistant recovery manager. And Michael Shaw is the state liaison with the unmet needs and whatnot, but he was there organizing that. Also, I've got the concrete quote back from one of the contractors that I had for the Dropbox, and for grand view, in the amount of eighteen hundred sixty-seven and five cents, that does not include the dirtwork. Hopefully I'll be able to do that. And as the mayor was going to talk about, everything is ready for Team Rubicon for this weekend. Uh, all the forms and all the, everything's all signed and finished, I'll be picking up a chipper for them, uh, so they can use that. Starting at seven thirty, I think, on, uh, I believe. About forty guys or so will be, will be working over here on the north side, west side of here, uh, Town Hall. Also, I've been, uh, working on the roads throughout the town, prepare for the, because that's what I've been able to. I've also got quotes for a crack fill machine for two days at three fifty a day, and also a compressor to blow out the cracks, um, at one twenty-six thirty-four for two days. Uh, we also got the dump truck, the dump truck back from MHC Kenworth, and all is good with that. Um, and then CSU has completed work on Clayhouse Street, a note that was a weekend ahead of schedule. And I've also got the, uh, winterizing, uh, the pool for as far as the chemicals, like going in the pool for winterizing it, um, taking care of it, and then also we're working with, uh, Mr. Chaney to, uh, winterize it. So the one way I love is just the cover or for now, have it altered. Where's the water going for Team Rubicon? Where's the red, red, here's the line? Yes, okay, and that was already organized, and they, they okay with the pasture.
That starts at seven thirty, and the public's, you know, if you guys wanna come out and help, uh, serve some food, or just thank these guys for helping our town, it'd be wonderful if you wanted to donate water, donate brownies, whatever. I'm sure these guys would love, um, chocolate. So, so, thank you, Mr. Pauline, very much. Okay, Mr. Paul?
Yes, most, uh, most people are no doubt aware of, uh, your Town Hall is getting close to being done. Um, there's just this one minor pickup of just two in mind, that nobody seems to know who actually needs the easement. So I've been working with CSU, um, in particular, uh, Mr. Crochet, who's the president, out there, um, on some possible language, um, that he said that CSU books have much of a history um, that will entice and encourage the town to continue to find these people who they need to grant easement to, um, but that they necessarily wouldn't hold up our C.O. So there is life at the end of the tunnel, or the end of the pipe, or I would like to look at it. Um, but there's still some language in the body that I'm not real comfortable with. So I'm still trying to work, work through that, get it back, um, so that I can have something for the sign that says, okay, for now, we can go get in there, and we'll keep working on it. So I'll keep working on it, I know they're still working on it. Um, I don't think it's necessarily a fault of me. And other than a full documented municipal court, there's the chief and the clerk, and anyone else who is present can attest to this. That's all I have in mind.
Can that chief bring it?
My report's term ends, there's two things on it, I don't want to talk about. The news is, I, if you will, go around and talk to the business owners, and the summer, find out what they're doing for. What I was told consistently across the board is that everybody's recovered from the two years after the wall came in fire then. Businesses back to usual, some are, are well above. So the numbers I got was from twenty to seventy percent over the last two years, as far as the food service businesses. The bad news is that we had a burglary on the third. The house had only been vacated for three days. There's nothing about this burglary that suggests to me that this is random. There was plenty of targets, opportunities next to this property. This is the second time this house has been hit in the exact same manner. Uh, there's no caution, nobody's trying to defly it. The real issue, and the reason I'm bringing this up, is I'm still struggling with, people see something suspicious. Is it right? Have concerns about something, wanna report it, right? They're still not calling the Oast County Sheriff's Office. If you pass the county sheriff's office, dispatch it this twenty-four seven, and it was that. That's why I never get more than six feet away from this thing, okay? If I'm not in the area, if I'm in the area, across town, if somebody notices something, it's immediate response. I need them to call the Oast County Sheriff's Department. I'll get the message immediately, and plus I have a, I think every call for service that comes to that dispatch. We still got folks that see something suspicious, and two days later, two hours later, six hours later, the message, I need it in the office. So if you wanna get in these events when recurring, and somebody's not sure about it, always work with the vehicle, calls gotta go to the Oast County Sheriff's Office, because I know that great. So that's all I have to think.
Thank you very much. Is there any municipal correspondence? No? Okay. Is there any other business? I hear there is no other business and no objections, then, oh, excuse me.
Just one thing, there's a hole in the ground by one of the walking paths in the lane, inside portion of the lane, with electrical wiring in it. I've tried putting rocks on it, but they keep disappearing, somebody's gonna fall in that, and we're gonna have a problem.
I put boxes there, people keep...
I think, they take it, so I can, I mean, I'm hoping it would be a cat that will fit in there or something.
It'll lock or something.
Okay, so you, you're aware of that, okay, yeah, so perfect, thank you very much. Okay, this is the messenger, at nine oh six seven.